Welcome, everyone. If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight to our last scheduled meeting for this school year. Thankfully, it is not raining at this moment, which seems weird as well. We are going to start with the approval of board minutes. I don't have in front of me which meetings it was. Do we know which meetings?
Um, May 29th.
The board meeting of May 29th. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the board minutes for May 29, 2019? Ms. Rubenstein, second. Ms. Tell, all in favor? And that's five-nothing with Ms. Napolitano and Dr. Eckers, five-nothing. May 21st?
21st as well.
I'm gonna go back. Someone like to approve the board minutes for the May 21st and May 29th meetings? Ms. Rubenstein, thank you. Ms. Tell, second, thank you. All in favor? Five-nothing. Thank you. Next are just informational notes for documents that were provided to us in advance, which was the budget appropriations report for the general fund for April 2019, budget transfers over 5,000 for the same month, the revenue status reports, cash receipts and school lunch, as well as the warrants, all for 2019. Are there any comments regarding same? Excellent. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the treasures report for April of 2019? Ms. Baruch, second. Mr. Perisi, any discussion? All in favor? Five-nothing. Excellent. Your hand raising doesn't count, Dr. Card, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes. We're going to move to the communications and announcements. First are announcements of board members. I know that many of us have attended the senior awards at both Clark and East Meadow High School over the last couple nights, which can do nothing but make us really proud of the students that we have in our district who have done incredible things, and it's incredible to see how many students are receiving awards and scholarships. It's not just a couple or a few. There are many, many students, and it's great to see the wide breadth of students that are receiving these awards. Are there any other board announcements? Dr. Card?
I will reserve my comments for the podium.
Now is the first of two public commentary sections. This is the chance for people to address the board on issues that relate to tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak, if you could please grab a blue card and fill in some information, and then you'll have three minutes at the podium to address the board. There will be another second commentary section at the end for those items that are not on the agenda for which people would like to speak tonight. Anyone for agenda items? Excellent. Then, Dr. Card, I turn it over to you.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Lukasik and Mr. Mendonis to the podium for student recognitions.
This year was our first year that East Meadow Middle School students participated in Long Island History Day at Hofstra University. This local contest determines which students qualify for the New York State competition with the chance to compete at the national level. National History Day is a highly regarded academic program designed to cultivate historical research skills in students. With 50 Long Island schools participating and over 400 different entries, two Clark Middle School students qualified for the state competition. Tonight, we honor these students and their dedication to researching, writing and producing an award-winning documentary, Frances Oldham Kelsey, "The Thalidomide Crisis." That's tough to say, "The Thalidomide Crisis." The woman who saved America and reformed the FDA. Please help me congratulate Ms. Faith Fuller and Ms. Sri Satpathi for qualifying to present their documentary at the New York State History Day competition in Cooperstown this year. You're actually getting two certificates. One is from the Cooperstown, the New York State competition, and one is from the school district. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Fitzpatrick to join me at the podium.
On behalf of the Board of Education, Central Administration, staff and faculty, let me take this opportunity to express my appreciation to Robin Fitzpatrick for her two years as the outstanding, or two years of outstanding service to the East Meadow School District community as PTA Council President. I realize that it took a great deal of your personal time to accomplish the things you and your executive board did during the past two years, particularly the Stop the Bleed Program for our staff and parents. Thanks for your partnership over the past two years. Our Coffee Mondays helped ease my transition into the district. I am forever grateful for your friendship and kindness. Although you are no longer serving as an officer, I hope you will remain active in the Parent Teacher Association. Your leadership and commitment to the mission of the PTA, I'm sure, will surely continue to inspire all of the parent volunteers. My best wishes to you and your family for a happy and relaxing summer. Thank you, Robin.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Melnick, Mrs. Rubenstein and Mr. Perisi to the podium.
Over the last three years, I've come to know Ms. Rubenstein and Mr. Perisi, Joe and Marcy, as nothing less than advocates for the children and community members of our district. And while I have only known them for three years, they've been doing this much longer than that. Three tours of duty, as I shall call them, and Joe, you had a first run at it and came back and said, "Yeah, I want to do this." And that just shows their commitment to these schools and to this board. I've always considered being on the board, community service. We unfortunately don't get paid for this. We spend a lot of time doing it, but we know we're doing what we think is best for this district and our kids, and I know you've always had that in mind as you've been going through and working for this board. So, on behalf of the district, the board and our community, we thank you for that. Outside of the community service that you've provided here, both of you have been very active in the community at large in East Meadow, whether through Kiwanis or SEMCO. It does not stop here, and I'm certain it won't stop. No, I'm well aware of that. And again, we thank you for that, knowing that as well. So, we do have two plaques for you tonight that I'd like to read. "The East Meadow Board of Education expresses its appreciation to Marcy Rubenstein, Board Member 2009 to 2019, in recognition of your dedication, service and contributions to the children and residents of the East Meadow Community, June 19, 2019." And Joe, "The East Meadow Board of Education expresses its appreciation to Joseph Perisi, Board Member 2005, 2007 and 2009, 2019, in recognition of your dedication, service and contributions to the children and residents of the East Meadow Community, June 19, 2019." Really, thank you both. Really, I appreciate all that you've done for me as well.
I'd like to invite Mr. Russo and Dr. Casamento to the podium.
Good evening, once again. On behalf of the Board of Education and the East Meadow School District community, I'd like to thank all of the retirees, all of those of you who are retiring for your years of service and commitment to the children and families of the East Meadow School District. Congratulations on the occasion of your retirement. As you head off into this new season of life, don't stop doing what made you who you are. Please continue to challenge yourself, whether that's learning, inspiring others, investing in others and/or teaching others. Whatever you do, wherever you go, I wish you the very best. Continue to be a better you, better than you were yesterday. My best wishes for a long, healthy and fulfilling retirement to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Card. I would like to congratulate all of our retirees who were here with us this evening. Collectively, you represent over 300 years of service with the district, and we are so grateful for all that you have done for the children of East Meadow. At this time, I'd like to invite each of our retirees to come forward and receive a plaque in recognition of your service to the district. Judith Arabian?
Once again, congratulations to all of our retirees. We wish you all the best in retirement.
Okay, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Ms. Kathy Nesto, Ms. Diane Reiser and Joanne Gowstina for planning this wonderful event. Thank you very much.
business. You are more than welcome to stay if you'd like to find out more about the school district or if you have other things to do, please feel free to leave at this time. But you can stay.
But we won't hold it against you if you leave.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Yep, we are going to move into the next item on the agenda, which is the second reading of Policy 5152.2, the admission of foreign students. We reviewed this for the first time at the last meeting, and I don't believe we had any changes from then, correct, Ms. Russo? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Napolitano, any discussion regarding this? Excellent. All in favor? Six-nothing. Next is the follow-up on the community forums regarding the fields. I think it was an excellent meeting overall. I think we had a lot of people here, which was really great. We did fill up the room, to say the least, with both parents, community members and especially students who all got to share with us their experiences and what they would look for and like. We also had surveys taken, which have been provided to us. Are those up on the website yet?
Yes. No, they're not up on the website yet, but they were summarized, and I think they were in the last board packet.
Yes, we did receive them.
For your review.
Yes. So, this is really, we're not voting on anything tonight on this per se, but sort of just discussing it and seeing which direction we should sort of head in, or at least discuss as the next steps. In looking at the surveys and reviewing them, a lot of good points were made. I think there were a lot of, I don't want to say falsehoods that were inserted in, but sort of people choosing to ignore things as opposed to commenting on them directly. And what I'm speaking of specifically is the health issues that may arise with turf fields. Some people wrote, "There are no health issues." Whether or not there are, you know, I know is still out there, but I think just ignoring that fact is not us doing our due diligence. I know there's been, there wouldn't be any articles written about it, there wouldn't be any research into it if it was 100% safe, no issues whatsoever. Some people brought up, "Oh, but other districts are doing it, they have turf fields. Why then wouldn't we?" Obviously, they think it's safe. To me, that's sort of a false narrative of that's us just going along with the bunch and not saying, "We're going to do our own due diligence on this and do our own research." Additionally, saying that we send kids to go play on these fields, well, then they're playing on those fields once or twice a week, not five, six, or maybe even seven days a week, which I think would also have an impact health-wise. Now, that being said, for me at least, and obviously this is all my personal opinion, obviously, the people who did come to the meeting were very much in favor of turf fields over grass fields, and they had their reasons for it. I'm not against that whatsoever. I think the next determining factor is going to be, is it possible for us to do? Both actually putting it in in timeframe-wise, monetarily, when would we be able to do this? How would we be able to gather the funds for this to put it together? Anyone else can jump in?
I actually had one thing I wanted to just add on. A few of the families that were here told me that their children were sent to practice on turf fields, that the district was paying for the children to be bused for practice onto turf fields. So, I think we have to be very careful with what we say about the health if we're choosing to send our students there, not just to play against opponents, but to practice as well. I would like to know if we, what our costs would be if we were to go to turf fields versus the grass fields that we had in the bond, and can we do that without piercing a cap? I would also, whatever I was thinking second, it just flew out. So, if it flies back in...
So, I thought of only three different scenarios financially, and that's taking, you know, we'll take the other pieces as they come as well. So, one would be floating another bond, which, you know, we just passed a bond, which I think was a great bond, it is going to get, and has already had some great work done here. I don't think this necessitates floating another one. I don't think this reaches the level of something that the district needs on such a tight timeline that that would be required.
Unless you float the bond with something else.
Correct.
Turf and solar or turf and something else.
Right.
That might be an option.
Right. And Dr. Peaseau might be able to speak to that, not necessarily tonight, because for the solar option, we may not need a bond, right? That might be offset by other...
There's a couple ways to go.
Right. So, that might be at a lower cost to the district anyway, right? So, as an option for solar.
It's always something that, you know, we talked about, a different approach.
But, yeah. It's finding other stuff.
By itself would...
Correct. The other would be piercing a cap. For me, the reason to pierce a cap is for an educational need, an immediate educational need, or a immediate safety risk. I don't foresee this being something that could do that, or would, or at least that our community would vote 60% plus to do.
Just as a point of information, just from reading about the two school districts whose budgets were put up for a revote yesterday, I think it was Eastport-South Manor. Their budget was put up on May 21st, and they had a proposition there that they thought could be singularly based on piercing the cap, while their budget itself just required a simple majority. And they declared victory after May 21st, but 15 days later, the Commissioner of Education determined that the vote was invalid and that they needed a supermajority for both the proposition as well as their budget, correct, Mike?
Correct.
Yes. And so, I just want to make sure we put that out there so that our audience understands that should we decide to take that route, we're also putting in jeopardy the entire budget.
Correct. And I think the third methodology to this would be a plan over the next few years to set aside funds specifically for this within the budget, so that once those funds then came to fruition... came to fruition, we can then do that process.
Could I add to that?
Please.
And a possible route to support what you just stated is using a capital reserve fund. In so doing, the community would then have input, a say in whether or not we could extract those funds, correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, to use it towards turf fields. So, in so doing, we would be saying to the community, "We've heard you, we've planned, and now it's up to the community to decide whether or not they would like to release these funds, so that we could do turf." But let me add a few things that I think is important that we do as a part of the planning steps. I think one of the first things we should probably do, and this is no reflection on Dr. Pizzo, but see if we could contract with an independent outside expert as it relates to turf fields, so that we can get an objective opinion from an outside expert related to the ups and downs of synthetic fields. That would be one first step. A second step would be for us to put together cost estimates of how much it would cost to do turf fields at both Clark and East Meadow High School, right? And lastly, I think it's important that we provide a timeline in terms of the scope of work related to the current bond and field, because I think a part of the reaction from the community has a lot to do with field usage and the current state of the fields, and I think it's important that they know how much money was set aside in the bond for field upgrade. And I think it's also important for them to know what that timeline is, because I think after two years of approving a bond and not seeing the fruits of that vote is where a lot of people are pushing back and saying, "What gives?" So, I think we need to do that first, and then move on to items number two and three in terms of the outside expert and the cost estimates.
Dr. Card, I just want to also emphasize the need to make sure that the annual, the long-term maintenance is understood. I think there's a perception, and once you put the turf fields in, you're done. I don't think that's the case, and that should definitely come out in a due diligence.
And I think as a part of any report that would come from an outside objective observer or expert, I think it would be a conversation around maintenance. A lot of times, you hear people saying, "Well, turf fields does not require water." That's untrue. Am I correct, Pat? Right? You must water turf fields. That's how you keep it moist?
I know, too. The temperature's down.
Temperature's down, right. So, all of those things, I think, need to be explored in a way that is outside of the district, because it seems to me that there's already a perception that we have a view that is anti-turf. And so, if that is a view that's currently being held out there, it's important that we then bring an outside entity who will provide some objectivity to the community.
Right. Right. One last thought on this. I'm not anti-turf at all, I just think we have to see where the facts take us. But the other thing is, and again, I'm not a turf expert, but today, these fields act as recharging water into our aquifers. Great, you put a turf field in, what does that mean? What are we discharging into the aquifers? Again, these are the things that our due diligence needs to show. So, I would be really interested in understanding that.
I'm glad that you brought that up. You know, recently, in the newspaper, you saw issues related to rubberized floors that were put in place in the 1980s and 1990s, and here we are, 30 years later, having conversations about the removal of those rubberized floors because of mercury?
Mercury.
Right. And so, that has to be a concern that we have. What might be the future impact? And once again, hearing from somebody who is an expert in that area is going to be beneficial.
And again, one other thought, I like the idea of setting aside the funds as we go along, but to your point, Dr. Card, if we do that, and then there's, there's going to have to be some timeline established because of the expectations of, you know, the community, that's going to be very, very important. And I like the idea of allowing the community to, if we're going to take the funds from the capital reserve, allow the entire community to have a voice, one way or the other. Great, thank you.
Absolutely. And just speaking of expectations, and I'm sorry, does someone have something?
We also have to remember that the community voted on the bond. This was in the bond. It wasn't something that we said, okay, it might have been put in the bond by, but they voted on the approval of it, as well as us. We're all community members, as well as taxpayers.
Absolutely. And just, go ahead, I mean...
I just think the importance is communicating with those that have taken time out to come to meetings, and attend them, and engage in conversations, because I think what that reflects is that we are a board that is open to communication, and it validates the fact that we hear them, regardless of whatever decision is the outcome, based on community input.
Yeah. And as you've said, Mr. Napolitano and Joe, you mentioned also, it's just expectation setting, because I think if we went by what people said they wanted, we wouldn't have a blade of grass in East Meadow School districts. There was talks of the middle schools and the elementary schools getting turf fields, and we have to be upfront with people as to what the plan would be, what expectations should be, so that there are no, "Well, why didn't Bowling Green get a turf field?" So, I think that's important as well. But I think now, you know, we've had our meeting, there's, I think, we have a plan to set up a plan at this point, I think, which is good, and we'll start putting together information and start moving towards something and getting a final decision.
We'll leave it for that. And I just want to add one other point that I've, somebody has on double mics?
I just wanted to add something, something that I heard from a lot of the students, student athletes in the audience, and this is definitely something that we'll have to address. It seems to me that the students have this belief system that goes something like this, "Turf fields will prevent accidents." Right. And I think that's definitely something that must be explored. My understanding, and I looked to Dr. Pizzo to correct me, at least I make a false statement, is that it's not that you don't have accidents on a turf field, but the accidents are different types of accidents or injuries. And I think that needs to be explained and articulated, so that people are not under the false impression that the minute we get turf fields, kids will no longer have accidents as a result of playing sports. It's important that people hear that, because the kids think that. Just wanted to put that out there.
Are there any more comments? Would anyone like to say anything else regarding this issue item?
I just wanted to say, I'm glad you had that forum. I think it helps a lot of people, validating a lot of people's thoughts, ideas, and feelings, and I think open communication is really important.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Rubenstein.
Mr. Mallon, can you please have them turn on their mics?
I'm sorry.
It's all right. I get it.
She didn't tap me.
We're now audio recording all of these, so Dr. Casamento is very nicely reminding us to turn on our mics when we are making a comment, so that it gets recorded. We're now going to move into the consent agenda items. The first is curriculum instruction. Would someone like to make a motion to approve agenda items F1 and 2? Ms. Rubenstein, second. Ms. Napolitano, any discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. Next is personnel. Would someone like to make a motion to approve agenda items G1 through 15, please? Ms. Tell, second. Mr. Parisi, any discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. Facilities is the next. Would someone like to make a motion to approve agenda... I skipped one?
Yes.
H, I'm learning my alphabet, I'm trying my best. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the business items and the agenda items? H, 1 through 18. Ms. Baruch, second. Mr. Parisi, all in favor? Six, nothing. And now, as I was saying, facilities. Someone like to make a motion to approve agenda items I, 1 through 4? Ms. Napolitano, second. Ms. Rubenstein, any discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. We are now at the time for public commentary. If, again, if you would like to speak, if you could please bring a blue card that looks like this, and fill one out over there. We do have one person, Ms. Luce.
Is that the same?
Yeah, you do. Dr. Casamento's going to be mad if you don't.
You have to be recorded.
You have to set an example.
So, I have a question regarding the turf. In preparing for the forum, I was doing a lot of reading, a lot of research, and one of the things that came up is that there are alternative sources to crumb. And I was wondering if that has been explored, if that was in the plan to explore, because they seem to have environmentally safer research behind them, so I was wondering if that was part of the plan.
I think that that leads to my recommendation about an outside expert, so that we could explore all of the possible options, and that is not to say that Dr. Pizzo did not do a thorough job in that. But once again, it goes back to, okay, you've heard from us, so it's important that we bring in an objective reporter to talk about some of those things that you just mentioned.
Yeah. I think, just because I think a lot of people that I was talking to within the forum were saying, you know, "It's this," or "It's not." And there are other options out there, so...
And you know what? I think it's important that we also bring in people who are not tied to the turf industry.
Agreed. Absolutely.
Because I heard some of those comments from people, and it seemed to me that it was coming from people who had a vested interest in us purchasing turf.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
So, we're going to make sure we do our due diligence and vet to make sure that whoever we bring in is not tied to a company that does turf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I forgot to time you, so I hope you kept under three minutes. Are there any other audience members who would like to comment tonight? Okay. If we could do salary changes, if someone like...
Do you want to do a board?
I'm going to come back to it, because I just want to do this, so that we could do that, and then do the other, but thank you. Salary change, would someone like to make a motion to approve salary changes? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Napolitano, all in favor? Six, nothing. And now, comments by board members. Ms. Rubenstein, I turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say that it's been the best of times, it's been the worst of times, but I'm really thankful that I had the opportunity to do what I love, and that's to serve our children and our school community. I had 10 wonderful years, and they will be most rewarding, most memorable, and most remarkable, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parisi, please.
Very simply, I just wanted to say a big thank you to my community and to my fellow board members for the great working relationship that I've had over the years with everybody, and I just say it's been an honor and privilege to have served my community, but most importantly, the kids. I think everything that we've ever done here has always been about the kids. Even if we disagreed on things, we always came back, our compromise area was always the kids. So, for that, I just want to say thank you to all. Thank you.
And if you hit your button?
That's, this is really tough following you guys. I mean, I kind of wanted to get my thing done first, but on a personal note, for my first year, I want to thank Joe and Marcy for making this such an easy transition for me, and helping me, and guiding me, and I appreciate both of you and your support, and I personally want to thank you. And you guys will never be too far away, so thank you. Actually, I apologize for being late also. One of the things that we have the opportunity as board members, and a lot of us wear a lot of different hats, and we're involved in different things in the community, and I'm sure you all know, the veterans are very important to me. They've become very near and dear, they're some of my best friends, and we're doing, once again, a fundraiser for them. Last year, we were able to complete the interior renovation. We still have the roof, which is supposed to be completed, hopefully, before this Veterans' Day, and replace their stove, but they are in desperate need of new folding chairs and tables. They are able to rent the facility out, and they've had a lot of interest in them in renting it out, but unfortunately, the chairs are breaking, and it's not good when you want to rent the place out. So, if anyone is interested, I'm doing a 50/50 raffle. Half the proceeds will go to a lucky winner. We are hoping to get to 5,000, which will give our veterans $2,500 to purchase new chairs and new tables. So, if anyone's interested, you can find me on social media, you can find me in, at home, you can find me in Uncle Giuseppe's. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Find me at my command.
So, if everyone could please go to Ms. Napolitano's house tonight, she'll be serving coffee and cake.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any coffee and cake. Disregard that.
Are there any other comments by board members? We are going to, and again, Marcy and Joe, thank you very much. You're not done yet. Would someone like to make a motion to move to executive session to discuss personnel matters? Mr. Parisi, second. Ms. Tell, all in favor? Six, nothing. We're not coming back, correct? We are not coming back tonight, so thank you all for coming tonight. We do appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you all the way at our first meeting of next year, which is in two weeks on July 2nd. in two weeks on July 2nd.